Good evening. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners Call Meeting, 6:00 PM, Tuesday, July 25, 2023. We will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a public hearing for the Milage Rate, 2023 through 2024 Milage Rate Presentation. The following presenters will come forward. Benita Campbell, our Budget Director, and Michael Harris, Henry County Tax Commissioner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County Community. My name is Benita Campbell. I'm the Budget Director for Henry County. Today, I will provide the Board and the citizens with a brief summary of some of the FY 2024 budget highlights. Once I conclude, I will turn it over to the Tax Commissioner, Mr. Michael Harris, who will then take you through the 2023 Milage Rate Discussion. The FY 2024 Adopted General Fund Budget is $232 million, which is a 7% or $15.1 million increase year-over-year. Some items of note for the FY 2024 Budget. The adopted budget was based on the current milage rate of 12.733 mils. Only current projected revenues are being used to pay for current projected expenditures. Fund balance was not used to balance the budget. Some of the major items that were funded in this year's general fund budget include the class and comp implementation for county employees, judicial supplement increases, and countywide contract increases ranging from technological, medical, and professional services increases. The FY 2024 Budget was based on expected property tax digest growth of approximately 14%. Eighty-six percent of the growth is due to inflationary growth, while 14% is due to real housing inventory growth. At this time, I will yield to the Tax Commissioner, Mr. Harris, who will now take you through the Milage Rate Discussions for FY 2023.
Good evening again, Chair and Board members, as you set my presentation up. Again, I do want to piggyback on something Ms. Campbell mentioned, and I'll get into it in my presentation. The fact that the count that the Board is once again considering a 12.733 milage rate, which has been steady for the last six-plus years, I think it's just of note that certainly this is a testament to the work that Ms. Mary Matthews and her team, David Smith, Benita Campbell, and her entire team does, to generate and produce a budget that does not require the county to move into increasing their milage. So again, that's certainly something that needs to be noted. I'll kind of touch on that as well a bit more. And again, also accolades to the Board of Commissioners for you all having that insight and vision in supporting your staff in that manner. So quickly, I'm going to go through kind of some of the basics behind the milage rate process itself. What is a milage rate? Quite simply, it is a tax rate used to calculate local property taxes. The amount represents, the rate represents the amount a homeowner has to pay for every $1,000 of the property's assessed value. The assessed value includes both the structure and the land in which it sits. So when people get their assessment notices, they'll notice it's broken down by land and by structure. Property values are comprised of two separate entities. First, it's a fair market value. This is the, this is determined by the Tax Assessor's Office. They have strict regulations on how they go about making those assessments. They are bound by certain rules and regulations to make the determinations. People often ask us, you know, why can't it just be lower? They are, they have strict guidelines they have to follow in order to make sure that the assessments are done in accordance with state and federal provisions. The Tax Assessor's Office mails notices of the, in April and May. Taxpayer has 45 days to appeal the value to the Board of Assessors. So again, and sometime in typically late May, early, late April, early May, everyone will receive an assessment notice. It's not a bill, it's simply an assessment notice notifying property owners of what their assessed value has been for that, for that tax year. And every property owner has the right to appeal that decision should they deem it necessary, and they have 45 days to appeal to the Board of Assessors. The assessed value is simply taking that fair market value and taking 40% of it, so simply multiplying that by 40%, that gives you your assessed value. So calculating the county property tax at 12.733, as Ms. Campbell stated, the county intends to maintain. The equation is relatively simple. It's assessed value minus any exemptions that may apply, times your milage rate, simply gives you your taxes due. So here's an example of a homesteaded property versus a non-homesteaded property. Homesteaded property with a market value of $300,000, that times 40% would yield a $120,000 assessed value. So they would be assessed at that level, with the exception of, in this case, it's a homesteaded property, so standard L1 exemption would be $15,000. So $15,000 is deducted from that $120,000 assessed value, so now your taxable value is down to $105,000, and that's what you're taxed on. So that $105,000 times the milage rate of 12.733, which again, for this purposes, it'd be times .012733, that would yield a county tax of $1,336.96 for a property that has homestead, again, as it includes that $15,000 homestead exemption, based on a standard L1 exemption. For a non-homesteaded property, same market value, same fair market value of $300,000, which yields the same assessed value of $120,000. However, because it's not, doesn't have a homestead, it would not be able to utilize the $15,000 homestead exemption. So their tax formula would simply be that $120,000 taxable value times the milage rate, which would yield a county tax of $1,527.96. Difference of about $191 in your county taxes. Again, I want to continue to emphasize county versus general overall, because this does not include the milage rates for the school board or the water authority or any of the cities. Where we're talking about tonight is just the county milage rates. So what happens if my property value goes up and my milage rate remains the same, which is being proposed this evening by the Board? Property value increases from $300,000 to $360,000, a 20% increase. Once again, same formula, 360 times 40% to give you your assessed value of $144,000. That $144,000 times your milage rate of, again, 12.733 would yield a non-homesteaded property tax of $1,833.60 and 55 cents. So an increase of about $305 for a property that increased by 20%. And again, it's critical to stress that this is for a non-homesteaded property, because a homesteaded property would not see an increase in county taxes due to the frozen exemption if the base value of the property is less than the current assessed value. Frozen exemption does not apply to school taxes or improvements made to the house or additional land acquired or the water authority bond. Historically, every year, we get a number of questions in reference to the frozen provision. Do I have it? How does it apply? How do I apply for it? So I want to walk through some of the basics of it. It was enacted by local legislation back in 2004. As many people may recall, back in 2004, the county was seeing unprecedented growth. We were one of the top, I think, top six fastest-growing counties in the nation. And as such, our value, property values were going up exponentially. And the challenge they were having was a lot of our senior citizens were having challenges because of, they're faced with increasingly high tax bills, because the values were increasing so quickly. So local legislation, the Board of Commissioners here, worked with the local legislation and delegation to adopt this legislation. It includes the residence and up to five contiguous acres of land. The base year is the fair market value of your home from the year prior to filing for homestead. So if someone were to file, apply for homestead today, your base year would be 2023, because it would apply for, because you, if you applied today, it would be applicable in 2024, so it's the previous year. Exemption is automatically renewed from year to year, so long as the resident continues to occupy the home as a primary residence. I tell people all the time, they ask, do I have to come back in and reapply for frozen provision? No, when you apply for your original homestead, you're automatically put into this, this provision automatically kicks in. Homeowner pays the base year value of the county, for the county and water portions of the tax bill, even if the value increases beyond the base year. If property value decreases below the base year, the homeowner would pay based on the lower valuation, so you'd not, so you'd never get penalized for having a frozen provision in place. Want to give a brief example of what it looks like and how it actually applies on your tax bill. So went back and we took a 2020 tax bill, and again, just want to note that, again, adjusted fair market values, this is what they came back as a fair market value on this property in 2020. The assessed value, again, taking 40% would be the 71.280, and then your exemption amount. This is, the exemption amount is the assessment minus the exemption gives you your taxable value, in this case, $45,580. The milage rate, again, 12.04, again, once you, once you put the tax credit in there, it's 12.733, everything added. Once you add in your police, fire, and recreation, all those numbers add up to 12.733. So this yielded a tax, a county tax of $438 plus these additional items. Again, in 2019, they broke these items out, unincorporated special service district, police special service district, fire special service district, and recreation special service district. And you'll see, just note those numbers, why I highlighted them. So when we go to our next bill, 2021, you'll note that the fair market value has increased, as has our exemption amount, but the taxable value has remained the same. This is what the frozen provision looks like. You're only still being, the equation you're using is just that taxable value, and that remains the same. Milage rate remains the same, net tax amount on county tax remains the same, and same for all of these special service districts. It's the exact same numbers for this year. Now, again, with the adjusted fair market value rate, you'll see that the taxable value on your school, maintenance, and operations and bond, that has increased going back. It's gone from, on a school MNO, I think, $67,000 to $75,000. So going to 2021 bill, again, noting that the taxable value is 45.560 to 2021 bill, that taxable value remains the same, even though the fair market value has increased. The way to offset that increase is by increasing your exemption amount. So the exemption amount increases to offset the increase in your fair market value, which keeps your taxable value at the exact same for your county taxes. And that's the point I wanted to make sure we're stressing here. So because the Board is opting to keep the milage rate at the exact same, county taxes for those who have a homestead, they should not see an increase in county taxes, nor in any of the special service districts of police, fire, or recreation. So I want to make sure we have that point clarified.
So Commissioner Harris.
Before you go any further, can you go back to the slide that talks about what happens to my tax bill?
Sure.
So from, from this standpoint here, it says that property values go up, milage rate remains the same. So who controls, the county doesn't control the, how property values go up. Is that dictated by the market, or?
It is. Yeah, so every year, the Tax Assessor's Office, again, John Self and his team, Cooper Keller and Barbara, they go through the process of assessing all the properties within the, within the county. And they come back with a determination based on a variety of factors. Some are based on sales, based on market trends, things of that nature. But they have strict guidelines that they have to follow to make their assessments. So every year, they make the assessments, those assessments come back. So if a property value increases from 300, 360, 360,000, that has nothing to do with the Board of Commissioners. You know, the, again, as stated, the formula is relatively simple. It's simply value times tax rate equals tax. If any one of those items, you know, those variables, value or tax rate goes up, then ultimately, your tax bill will go up. In this case, the Board is proposing to leave the tax rate at the exact same. However, the values have increased, thereby equating for an increase in tax, tax values. For non-homesteaded properties, they're going to want to go back and emphasize that. If you have, if you already have your homestead, then you are in, then that frozen provision applies, and your taxable value would still remain the same, because your exemption amount would simply be increased to offset that addition in the fair market value.
So when you go to the next slide about the frozen exemption, so if they don't, if they have not filed for their homestead exemption or don't have a homestead as an exemption, then they don't qualify for the frozen exemption.
That's correct. Yeah, this is your primary residence, and we, you know, every year, we, or every couple of months, we put out homeowners' bill of rights, kind of a pamphlet that we put out. We mail it to all new homeowners in Henry County. We get that information from the Assessor's Office. So when it comes to us, we mail them out the information, stressing the point of making sure they apply for their homestead in a timely manner, to make sure that they can utilize this benefit. But again, to your point, Chair, if they have not applied for the homestead, then you're right, then their county taxes would be subject to those increase in valuations in the same manner that the current, they're currently subjected to by their school board, milage rates.
Okay. And so going to the next slide, when you talk about, you're showing the examples on the tax bills, then the increases is coming from the school and water?
Yeah, to a far lesser degree, water. But in this case, the 2022, the 2020 bill, again, with the fair market value of $178,000, that yielded a county maintenance and operations bill tax of $1,300, plus their school bond of $258, so roughly $1,600 for school. If we go to, if we go to the 2021 bill, that has now, while the county tax has remained the same, the school has, MNO has increased to $1,500, the bond has increased to $283, so now you're up to about $1,700 or close to $1,800. And fast forward to 2022 bill, again, county taxes remain the same for this homesteaded property, but now your school MNO is $1,700, your school bond is $300, so now your school taxes are in excess of $2,000.
So ours remain the same, but because the schools are not part of the frozen exemption, theirs continue to rise while ours remain the same?
That's correct. Until, I think we're going to hit, until they reach, there is an age exemption that's offered here in Henry County, beginning at age 62. Beginning at age 62, residents can come back in. They do need to come back in and reapply for the age exemption at age 62, once they're 62, on January 1st, by January 1st of that year. So at age 62, you're able to deduct $20,000 off of your school board, of your school taxes. At age 65, that amount increases to $80,000, is deducted from your assessed value on your school taxes. At the age of 68, that amount increases to $120,000, that's deducted directly off of your assessed value to, again, lower your taxable value. And by age 70, you no longer have to pay any school taxes. So that is, that is the provision they have on the school side to kind of help offset some of the tax burden for some of our senior citizens.
So then there are other exemptions for disability and veterans?
There are. And there's, there are set specifications on how you qualify for those exemptions. Disability veterans, disability exemptions, surviving spouse in armed conflict, surviving spouse with a peace officer, and there's conservation, free port exemptions applied to some of our businesses, and forest and land protection exemptions. So where do our tax dollars go? You just probably charted about every year, and because our milage rate has remained set at the 12.733 for the last six-plus years, and the school board has remained set at 20 mils on their MNO and 3.62, the chart hasn't changed either. The school maintenance and operation equates for right at 50% of the, of the taxes. Add to that the school bond of 3.62 mils, and so you have about 58% of all taxes paid are for going to our school, school taxes. Water Authority, the two mils for the Water Authority, their bond, that equates about 5% of total taxes paid, and remaining 37% accounts for the county government. And again, that's your police, fire, roads, parks, and everything else included with county, running of the county government.
And the school board determine their mils themselves?
They, they have, and they have been at 20 mils for, I believe, over 10 years. And they are capped by local legis, by state legislation at 20 mils. They can't go beyond 20 mils. So, and they've been, they've been fixed there. And then you go below it, but they cannot, but they cannot go beyond that on their maintenance and operation. So just quickly, the digest process itself, it's a collaborative process, working with several entities, working together. It begins with the Tax Assessor's Office, I mentioned Mr. John Self earlier, he and his team, Cooper and Barbara. They do a phenomenal job every, each and every single year. They have to go through the process of, again, going through the assessment of all the properties within the county, compiling that information, going through the appeal process, which they're in process of finishing up now. And so they work in conjunction with their Board of Assessors to work through, and, and they, once they compile all the assessments, again, that's not just for real property, but for timberland, heavy equipment, utilities, and the like. They have to compile that information, all that information, and they begin preparing the digest and provide the digest numbers each and every year. From there, our team gets involved, and again, Ms. Lynn Cardy and her team, they work hand-in-hand with the Tax Assessor's Office in taking that digest information and being able to work through the milage process. We work hand-in-hand with all the different jurisdictions, Board of Commissioners, Board of Education in respective cities, to perfect the digest and make sure everything is in line. Again, Board of Education, we have to work with them. They have to set their mil. And again, so the process way typically works in the same manner it's worked here with the Board of Commissioners. You set a budget, and then based on your budget, you know, your budget needs, you establish your, and then from there, you find out from the Assessor's Office what their digest amount is, what's the taxable value, taxable amount of, of.
I know that you guys were probably bombarded with, you know, concern because property values are increased. So when they receive their property tax statement, then this credit will be reflected on there, which will reduce the amount that they had originally received from the Assessor's Office?
That's correct. So on the assessment notice, assessment notice, because again, the state was still working through some of the details on this grant relief program, so they weren't even known to us at that time. They just knew they'd passed it, just trying to work through some of the details at the time that Mr. Self and his office mailed out the assessment notices. This was not in place, so the assessment notices that were mailed out would not have reflected this tax credit. For those that are eligible, it'll be reflected, and this is kind of small, we'll have this on our website as well, but there'll be a line item that states HTRG credit, and it'll be shown like in the box over here as a credit. So it'd be a negative $500 and some dollars. So again, that assessment notice they received, for those that are eligible, they should see an additional reduction of about $500.
And if they live in the city and within the city limits of one of our municipalities, it will be a little bit more?
A little bit more, because they, because they were in place obviously before 2004. Then I think we calculated the City of McDonough based on their 3.033 milage rate, and that would yield about another, an additional $80 in tax credit relief. So there is additional, in addition to the milage rates going down overall, the total milage rates, they'll also have additional extra from the tax relief grant. So that is that. Again, today represents the second of three hearings. We had our initial hearing this morning at 10:00 AM. This is the second hearing. And third hearing is scheduled for next Tuesday at 9:00 AM, with the adoption to follow thereafter at 9:15 AM. Happy to address any questions or comments that you may have.
Are there any questions from the Board? I'd like for Benita to come back up and kind of talk a little bit about, now, Commissioner Harris, we had a rollback on ours due to the fact that the City of Stockbridge started their own police department. So what was that meal rollback for, for the county?
That's correct. So last year, that special, that police special service district, last year, the City of Stockbridge, they received police services from the county, or the year before then. At some point last year, they started their own police force. And prior to that, citizens in incorporated City of Stockbridge, they were paying that 1.94 as all other, same with everyone in unincorporated areas, they were paying that 1.904 mil to cover, for, to equate for the coverage of their police services. When they enacted their own police force, they came back and approached the county and said, hey, we now have our own police force. We don't need to, we no longer have a need for county police services. Therefore, that 1.94 mil that the, that the citizens of City of Stockbridge are paying, we'd like for that to go away, which it has. So there, so if you live in the City of Stockbridge, then that 1.94 mil has gone away. Or again, right now, they have not yet established a, a milage. They, we have their meeting Thursday, 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 yeah, Thursday, during Thursday morning, to set and establish their milage. So whether or not they choose to reestablish the 1.94 that was removed in order to pay for their police services or another amount, that's at the discretion of the Stockbridge City Council.
So Benita, what percentage of our budget goes to public safety?
Public safety, one second. Is 52% of our budget, of our overall general fund budget.
Goes to public safety?
Yes, ma'am.
And what percentage goes to parks and recreation?
Um, hold on. Do you have a calculator? Do you have, I think it's like 10%.
Does that include senior services as well?
No, ma'am. Just parks and rec.
Just parks and rec.
Senior services is covered under, under the general fund.
So about 60% of our budget goes to public safety and parks and rec?
Yes, ma'am.
Any comments or statements, any questions? Any comments or statements, any questions from the board? Okay, all right. Thank you all so much. If you all would just wait around for me just a little bit. This is a public hearing. Those wishing to come and speak, please state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak. Stephanie, do you have the timer set? So you can come forward, state your name, and you may address the board. Doesn't matter, whichever one.
Hi, my name is Mindy Mayers. What else did you say the state?
Just your name.
Oh, just my name, okay, sorry. Mindy Mayers, I live in the City of Stockbridge, but in Henry County, and I just want to say that I'm concerned about anytime we talk about our taxes increasing in any way, because as you just heard, City of Stockbridge, they're going to institute, I was at their tax hearing, and it seems pretty, they seem pretty confident that they're going to institute a tax for us in the City of Stockbridge. I was at the school hearing, and it was pretty confident there that our taxes are going to go up on that rate. And so looking at my bill, you know, I can remember moving to Henry County and starting with my taxes at seventeen hundred, and now I'm almost up to five thousand. And I look at in the coming years, right, if we keep going on this trend of going up so significantly in Henry County, where it wasn't like this probably pre-two thousand and nine, but over the past couple of years, it's going up a lot. And so I just really ask you all, I don't hear anyone ever talking about deductions, like, or like cutting anything, right? It's just, we gotta go with this budget, and it seems like when you all come, it's like, okay, we already have the budget, we've established this rate, and this is what it is. And it's almost like we're just having these hearings out of just kind of, you know, ceremonial. And I just, you know, would really like for you all to really look at the impact that it's having on residents and how we're just being priced out of our homes, because our salaries are not going up, but these taxes keep going up every year, and it's very frustrating and very challenging for a lot of us. And that's my feedback.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Josie Antraules. I live in unincorporated McDonough here. This is my first time here. I've never done this before, so excuse me if I'm not how I'm supposed to be, but I wanted to also give some feedback too. I've been very concerned about how we're managing our taxes here. So I've been living in Henry County for fifteen years, and I never really cared about coming to any of these meetings, but year after year, especially the last three years, our taxes are going completely over like it's an increase that I've never seen before. And on, on that line, inflation has been going about four to eight percent all this time since pandemic, but our homes have been increasing about fifteen percent in value every year. So in the last two years, my home increased in value thirty percent. And with that, it definitely reflects linearly with your tax, even though this is an increase, but even if you don't increase it, it's still an increase on us. Our salaries are even less than that, than inflation, it's like maybe three percent that most companies have been doing. So we're really lagging every time, and seeing that I'm paying for property taxes about fifteen percent more, which is seven percent more than inflation last year, it just doesn't agree. And you can see with the budget increase that you're asking for the county, that you're asking for a seven percent increase, which kind of like makes sense with inflation. If inflation is going six percent, seven percent sounds, you know, there. But our, but what we're paying is a lot more than that. It's, it's, I don't know, it, it just makes no sense that last year I paid fifty-four hundred dollars, and this year I'm paying sixty-four hundred dollars, which is twenty percent more on my taxes, but you're only asking for seven percent more on budget. So that, I'm not a math expert, but I just think that need, we need a decrease in mileage rate, not a, not a keep it the same or increase it, we need a decrease. And that eighteen percent that says that we're gonna get back from this governor, Governor Kemp doing a property tax, whatever you call it, credit, eighteen percent is really three percent, because our homes went about fifteen percent in this county. So it's really just three percent that we're getting back from our last year inflation, which was another fifteen percent. So it's just math for me, doesn't kind of matches what we're doing. And I know we can explain it with a lot of numbers here, and you know, if we, if somebody gave me fifty thousand dollars more a year, I'll find out how to spend it, and I think that's what we're doing, but we definitely need to control how that's going and actually lower our tax. That's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brooke Winfrey. I'm a resident of District Five in Henry County, unincorporated. Thanks for being here tonight and listening to us, I appreciate it. So basically, since I understand that we're part of the homestead exemption if we filed, and the county's not raising on their end necessarily for homestead, my main concern is basically the, the school taxes. If there's any way you guys have collaboration with the school board, because that's where we see the effect mostly, what I'm assuming and seeing. So I encourage you guys to work with the school board maybe, and come up with a proposal to get everybody on the same page, and see where we can just cut a little off the top, because right now, it's just really like a sticker shock when these homeowners are opening their tax bills, they're like, what the heck is this? But yeah, please, work with the school board, maybe this is a collaboration opportunity, work together, kind of work for the homeowner's benefit and get things down just a little
My name is Robin James, and I live in Locust Grove, which is District One. I'm fifty-eight years old, my husband is sixty-seven. Obviously, we're not having children, we don't have children in school. So this school tax continues to go up, which it feels like it penalizes us, it doesn't benefit us at all, because we have no children in school. And I, I feel like that's penalizing us, and kind of unfair to us. Regardless of the homestead, that homestead, the taxes are still continuing to go up. So that's making our bill go up. My husband will be on a fixed income next year, after thirty-nine years of service, retiring. So it's really not helping us at all. And we moved here six years ago, and we want to stay in Henry County. We live, we live, moved from another state, so we want to stay here. But it almost makes it feel undesirable and unaffordable, because the people that, we own our home, we're not renters, we don't rent, we own our home, and we worked hard for our home. So it's kind of unfair to us, so I wish that you guys would work more for Henry County residents. We're not renters, and we want to stay within Henry County. But if you turn everything into renters, and, and it's so unaffordable for homeowners, then I see that as a problem. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Good evening, board and chair. Jamal Avery, five oh four Shades Walk, McDonough, Georgia, unincorporated, Henry County. I understand taxes a little bit differently, so I'm, I'm not too disturbed by what's going on. As Brooke stated, my previous neighbor stated, I just hope that you're able to collaborate with the school board. We consider ourselves millennials, and unfortunately, at this current time, we don't have children in the school board, I mean, in the school system. So, you know, I understand, you know, the concerns of our neighbors that, you know, we're paying into something that we're not utilizing, I get it. You know, if we decide to have a child, or whenever that, we, we, we want to send them to public school. My issue is our current state of public service and the way in which we receive it with the current budget of tax dollars that is allocated. I drive around, I'm, I'm driving on potholes, I'm passing trash, you know, I'm, I'm seeing all types of, you know, different things in Henry County that was not here before. Yes, I appreciate the growth, some of it, not all, but I, I challenge you guys to definitely look and collaborate with everyone who is taking from the tax digest from the, the county, to, to see if you can make some cuts, some changes, and, you know, to get us on a better track or trajectory than we currently are. That's all that I have.
Good evening, board. Thank you for all you do for our community. My name is Joshua Eckoff, unincorporated, Henry County, off of Chambers and Jonesboro Road. I heard the young man say Hampton has their own police, but when that shooting spree happened, our officers helped, because they're amazing. We went to the board meeting for the school, and I think someone there said twenty-seven percent over the last three years, it just keeps going up and up and up, and it is pricing some people out, you know? Like Jamal was saying with the roads and weeds, we only have twenty-five members on the DOT that mow three times a year, and it's like the communication's lacking on some departments, where they'll mow, but then the people don't pick up trash. Today, Officer Robinson called me.
How's your camera?
Pam at Code Enforcement is really helping out, you know, the last eight years she's been dealing with me. Oh, upside down, I got you. Code Enforcement's on point. We got three of them working on Saturdays, because they've been off for the last eight years, and, you know, we're all starting to communicate better and handling everything better when you listen to the civilians. And Officer Robinson called today, you know, was taking care of that, so it's, you know, we're growing in the right direction, but, you know, when, when things keep going up the way they are, you're losing a lot of good civilians. Like, he says he's been here fifteen years, first time speaking. Y'all know I love coming out here and saying hi, and sitting down in the meetings, emailing, like, I don't play, I got See, Click, Fix It app. So, you know, first time homeowner, I'm proud, I haven't been jaded by Atlanta or Georgia yet, you know? So it's like, anything we can do to help you, we're here for you, you know? If I need to go to the state hearings and start talking to them and banging on doors and get some real money, some real help, get these guys, you know, a raise, get more on duty than ten at night, you know, you know, I got you. So I appreciate you listening to us. I know these are some hard decisions you have to make, and I got fifty-two seconds, I'm just drawing a blank once I stare into your beautiful eyes, so I'm just gonna leave it at that and say thank you for all you do, have a great night. Oh, there are still no lines out on this main road or raised pavement markers, that's killing me. And the pot out front, come on, I'll go to Home Depot and get you guys a plant, something pretty to stare at. I mean, if any of these are real, I'll plant them for you. So the little things add up, I just want y'all to know that. We know this, and we appreciate all you do. Have a great night.
So Commissioner Harris, could you come up, because I wanted to, I was, wanted to address the older couples' concern or question. Have you all, do, do you all take advantage of the, I guess, the discount for the?
Yeah, I think that was Mrs. James, and I'd love to speak with you after, after the meeting, because you're right, at age, if someone on the deed is age sixty-seven, they should, they should already have their L three exemption in place, but certainly after this meeting, I would like to kind of speak to just kind of clarify that.
Because that would definitely.
Right.
Eliminate some of that school tax.
Yeah. And Chair, if I could, there was another comment. The gentleman mentioned eighteen percent. It's not eighteen percent, it's eighteen thousand dollar assess, reduction in your assessed, in your assessed amount. So it's not a percentage in this case, it's a, it's a mathematical equation, that eighteen thousand times your, the millage rate for the school board and for the county general fund should equate to ballpark around five hundred, I think five hundred and four dollars is what we're looking at. So it's an actual flat fee number that, that's being considered. And last, I did want to, point I did want to make, that the increases that, that there were spoken about, about, those come principally from non-homesteaded entities, that would be our industrial digest, our commercial digest, those that are paying those, those taxes. Those valuations went up in the same manner that, you know, other properties have gone up, but again, there is no homestead in those cases of the commercial properties, there are some exemptions that allowable for, for, for certain industrial entities, but for the vast majority of that, our industrial footprint alone equates to about nineteen percent, nineteen, twenty percent of our digest. So again, and they, they, those, those exemptions don't exist, the homestead exemption we're talking about, those exempts, exists for our homeowners and residents. Just wanted to clarify that point.
So I made this comment earlier this morning, I think it's important to understand that sometimes asking for a millage rate reduction, folks don't always understand what that means. And I can speak on, my property value went up thirty-seven percent this year, by the way, and I live in the City of McDonough, so I can understand that, but because I have the frozen tax exemption, my taxes for the county did not go up at all. And if you're looking at industrial and commercial, you gotta remember, they have the lowest impact on county services. We as residents have the highest count, the highest impact on those services, but yet they have some of the highest impact on our roads. So if you're asking, if you have a frozen homestead exemption, and you're asking for a reduction in taxes, in turn, what you are really asking for is that industrial and commercial taxes be reduced. So I say be careful what we ask for sometimes, and who you're asking, where that reduction come from, especially if you have the frozen homestead exemption, which is extremely important. Also want folks to know, we're in the bottom third when we look at our taxes in comparative to other counties. You can find that at the State of Georgia's tax website, it's there, you can find that there. And also, to the point that several of y'all have made, our school taxes are in the highest amount that they can be. So please make sure you get your frozen homestead exemption for your primary home, it is that important. And we are one of the few counties that actually has the frozen homestead exemption and the senior exemption. My office is in Butts County. I will tell you, the residents of Butts County would love to have both of those available in their county. So thank you for your time this evening, I appreciate that.
And, you know, I, I know that there were some comments about working with, the, the school board is a separate entity, they have their own board, they set their own budget, and just as the county has a board, and, and we set our budget. And so unfortunately, you know, those school taxes are not under the frozen exemption. If it would, then it probably would make the value a little bit lower, far as the taxes, correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Coming forward, if you haven't closed the session, Councilwoman Thomas, were you coming forward? I just, I think she was standing up before Commissioner Harris got up, if you want to allow her to speak, that's up to the board.
That's fine, if she want to come up and speak.
Good evening, board, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm Councilwoman Vanessa Thomas, City of McDonough at large, and I would certainly be remiss if, if I did not come before you all to speak on behalf of my constituents, homeowners and residents, not within this, only, not only within the City of McDonough, but City, but within Henry County as well. We've heard from a number of homeowners this evening regarding the taxes, and we, we've also heard that there are three different portions. We have the, our city tax, county taxes, as well as the school board taxes. Unfortunately, some of the homeowners were asking, you know, for. Um, unfortunately, but some of the homeowners were asking, you know, for, for us to work together. And, you know, but unfortunately, that has not happened, and I don't know if it will, I mean, all things are possible. But that is something that we should certainly look at, is working together when we do, look at our taxes. Because oftentimes, you know, we're getting increase from three different areas. And if you all own property, you certainly understand what I'm, what I'm talking about. Uh, we do have some senior citizens here that have problems with the increase, they're on fixed incomes. We currently have the different, um, levels of exemptions for, for our seniors. However, it comes in progressions, at age 62, 65, 68, and age 70. Now that's something that we should consider in giving them the full amount of their exemption instead of, instead of in, in progressions, such as if they reach, once they reach age 62 or, or 65. Now Clayton County, they give full exemptions at 65 for their senior residents. And that's something that we can consider, I've always, I've already mentioned it to the board, to the Board of Education. But that's something that we all can talk about and discuss, how we can make it more easier for all of our citizens, and especially our senior citizens who are on fixed incomes. So that is something that I would like for all of us, from city, from county, from the Board of Education, to consider working together when we all look at increasing our taxes, because it, it is as if we're having tax increase in three different areas, instead of just one, one set of, of tax increases. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
So the public hearing is closed. The next meeting will be August 1st. Our regular scheduled board meeting. And at this particular time, meeting is adjourned.